Sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, with the clerk Dave Krebs, please call roll.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Coolman.
Here.
Ms. Matroni.
Here.
And Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
Uh, if you are attending by telephone or if you're just listening in, would you please make sure that, uh, you're, uh, on mute or, um, so that we can't hear any background noises? Thank you very much. Um, please, uh, everybody here, please stand if you're able and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Um, thank you, everyone. Um, minutes of the council meeting of February second, two thousand twenty-one.
I believe everyone has received a copy of the minutes of the council meeting from February second. Um, I don't believe that there, I haven't heard any objections on that. I will assume that we will, I shouldn't say assume, but without any objections, I would move that we pass the council meeting minutes as written and dispense with the reading.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have no special reports. Uh, there's no letters of communication or citizen concerns that we're about aware of. Um, for administrative reports, I do have, um, uh, I am going to recommend, um, if I can find a sheet of paper that I just gave you, oh, John Myer for the Historic Landmarks Commission. And at the end of my report, uh, if council can, um, do it at president of council or at the end, I would like to, um, give a shout out to all the, uh, street division crews that were out diligently, starting yesterday and, uh, going all the way through the evening to make sure the roads were plowed. There was, as everyone knows, a lot to plow and move, and they really did a really good job. And I received a number of communication from residents, thankful for their hard work and dedication and appreciative of that. So I want to also recognize that, and I'm sure one on council does as well, and also to the leadership of the, of the division, Rob Ross and other, and put a plan in place to address the issue when we're ready and executed it. Um, so I want to give them some recognition as well. Um, not a glamorous task, but one that's critical to the city function, enable people being able to go to, uh, work. And unfortunately, maybe they'll be clean enough that people can go to school tomorrow if you have children, so some people might not be happy, but, um, so that's the end of my report. Uh, president of council, do you want to take that action now or when your report?
Let's wait until we get to my report.
All right, very good. Uh, city administrator has no report. Finance director?
I have no report, other than to call attention to the budget that was distributed last week and let everybody know if they have any questions, don't hesitate to give me a call.
Thank you. Um, or if you, especially if you had questions or if you have any items that you think should be addressed or included, so we can get the discussion going on those items, if any. Um, law director?
Thank you very much.
President of council?
Thank you, your honor. I would also like to echo your sentiment and thank our public service staff for all their hard work and sacrifice over the last two days in the cleaning of our city streets, especially with, I think they said on W2O, the fifth largest storm in the known history of the city. So I just really appreciate it for all the hard work and cleaning so quickly that this afternoon I was able to get my pooch keys. So that's the most important part. Um, with that, I would also like to make a, um, motion to appoint John Meyer to the Historic Landmarks Commission. It was just recommended three oh by the planning review committee.
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
And Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that is the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Many reports, finance and economic development?
Thank you, your honor. Uh, finance and economic development committee met on February ninth. Meeting was called to order at five thirty PM by chairman Mark Weber. Committee members present were Deborah Born, Tim McCarthy, and myself. Also present were Bridget Cabot, city administrator, Kate Sandretto, law director, Dave Krebs, finance director, Amber Rathburn, deputy finance director, and Steve Bronder, income tax commissioner. Uh, the approval of minutes. Ms. Born stated that the minutes were already approved at city council meeting. Ms. Sandretto stated that what was given at the city council meeting was a report of the meeting. So with no further obje- objections, the minutes of the December eighth, two thousand twenty committee meeting were approved. Uh, the finance directors' report, the committee reviewed expenditures over five thousand dollars for the month of January. There were questions regarding payments for the credit card bill, the comprehensive plan, paving on Stonecroft, speed signs, and tax software. All questions were answered by the administration. Uh, Mr. Krebs reported that the balance in the health and welfare fund as of January thirty-first was eighty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents. He said the balance was up a little at the end of the month, and we just received a seventy-four thousand dollar reimbursement that will get added to that balance. Mr. Krebs explained how the rates are calculated each year. Twenty twenty-one amended budget, uh, the proposed amended budget was distributed to the committee, and Ms. Cabot explained which, which items were carryovers from the two thousand twenty budget and which items are new items. She reviewed the large dollar items that were carried over and those that were added in the budget amendment. She encouraged the committee to email her if there are any questions, and I believe we'll be having our, our first reading on that. I'll introduce that as, for the first reading tonight. Uh, the tax commissioners' report, uh, Mr. Bronder reported that the income tax collections for the month of January were a little over one point nine million dollars, which is flat compared to the January of, of two thousand twenty. He said that he is anticipating that we will still see some lingering effects from the pandemic in this year's tax collections. Mr. Bronder explained that because the due dates were changed last year, the comparison from this year to last year may be skewed. He added that unemployment payments are not taxable at the local level. Mr. Bronder requested approval of two ordinances that reflect changes, the chapter eight, nine, one of the codified ordinances. He said that they are basically housekeeping items that update the city code to be consistent with the Ohio revised code. Said that one ordinance amends our definition of pensions. Uh, paragraph A was in place prior to the state's definition, and paragraph B adds the state language. The state, and then the second ordinance adds a definition for retirement benefits to mirror the state language. So myself and Mr. McCarthy both said it was, uh, that the ordinances looked pretty straightforward, and the committee agreed three zero to recommend approval. So there be no further business, the meeting adjourned at six oh five PM. And I will, um, have pieces of legislation, those housekeeping items, they're pretty much as definition, uh, changes, and, uh, if there's not any objections, I would like to, uh, introduce those two, uh, together. Okay, um, so I would like to introduce ordinances six and seven, two thousand twenty-one, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for their readings by number and title only and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
And Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number six, two thousand twenty-one, amending codified ordinance section eight ninety-one point zero three, uh, paragraph twenty-eight of the City of Perrysburg Business Regulation and Tax Code. And ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-one, amending codified ordinance section eight ninety-one point oh three of the City of Perrysburg Business Regulation and Tax Code by adding subsection fifty-one.
I move that ordinances six and seven, twenty twenty-one, be passed.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Okay, Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
And Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
And Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Oh, and Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
I almost missed you. Thank you.
All right, and then, um, I would like to introduce ordinance eight, two thousand twenty-one, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its first reading by number and title only.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Ordinance number eight, two thousand twenty-one, amending ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand twenty, to amend appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the year beginning January one, two thousand twenty-one, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one, and declaring an emergency.
All right, and our next meeting, Ms. Mayor, will be, uh, Tuesday, March ninth, two thousand twenty-one, at five thirty PM, and that...
Yep, good, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, and that, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
All good.
Old hat. All right, uh, safety committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report. This is Barry Van Huzen, chairman of safety committee. Um, Mr. Mayor, I do not have a report. Um, our next meeting will be Tuesday, February twenty-third, at six PM.
Thank you. I'm just looking, they gave me a cheat sheet, may have recreation next, but on our agenda it says planning, committee, planning zoning, so we'll do planning zoning next.
Okay, thank you, your honor. This is Tim McCarthy, chair of the planning zoning committee. Uh, we met on February ten, two thousand twenty-one, at, uh, five thirty PM. Present were myself, Corey Coolman, and Barry Van Huzen, also present were law director Kate Sandretto, planning zoning administrator Brody Walters, and deputy planning zoning administrator Mark Easternly. Um, I'll kind of give a Reader's Digest version of these minutes. Uh, the minutes of the prior, the January meeting were approved. Uh, we did vote to recommend John Meyer to landmarks, which council has already done. We reviewed the Rotary Park special approval use. That was the subject of a public hearing last time council met. And, uh, with the committee voted to recommend approval of that to council, we noted a few things on the plans and features that, uh, we just had questions about that, uh, we're going to go ahead and get cleaned up. I think the only substantive note was that the, uh, the inclusive park itself, we've had a pretty detailed depiction of what's in there, I mean, down to almost exact pieces of equipment. Um, that's not, Brody clarified for us that, you know, that's not, you know, absolutely they got to build each and every piece of equipment noted in their plan. It would only need to come back for review if there was some substantial change in the way the inclusive park, uh, will work, so, um, that will come to you later as ordinance nine, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we had talked about, we talked about swimming pools for a few months now. Uh, we had referred to the planning commission, the possibility of decreasing the setback, the side yard setback, that was the issue for a couple pool owners. The planning commission didn't feel a change should be made, uh, and I think the committee more or less agreed that that might not be the way to go. One of the property owners who had an above-ground pool has basically said that, okay, we'll, we'll comply if nothing's going to change. The other person, um, has an in-ground pool that originally was in a, a location that did comply and meet the setback requirements, but then that location changed, uh, we believe in large part due to, um, the contractor, uh, doing so, um, unfortunately for the homeowner. Um, we, we've talked about with Brody and Mark several ways to prevent this from happening in the future, um, and I'm sure those will be implemented, because it's a headache for them as well as for Kate and her council. We didn't have any resolution for the folks with the in-ground pool, but, uh, Corey Coolman and Kate were going to meet and see if they could maybe noodle a way to help with that situation. We return to the Arbor Day discussion again, which has been a several month topic. Uh, the planning commission, again, uh, did not recommend any changes to the code regarding what we are now calling living screens. Uh, we had a citizen, uh, present whose son lives in the city. Uh, he has a home with a pool, his young daughters would like to have a living fence for their pregnancy. Uh, this lady, Linda, Lisa Cook, I should say, is a master gardener affiliated with Ohio State, um, and she argued a living fence is good for the environment, good for erosion control, and good for wildlife, and she asked the committee to reconsider the ordinance. Kevin Rantin was present again, he's been present before, to make that same request. Um, we then talked about the regulation itself, and Brody Walters explained that he recalled, this came about because people were using a living screen when they couldn't be, build a fence, so they'd be told, okay, can't have a fence, so now they use a hedge line. I commented that I'm not sure I understand the public purpose of this, uh, is I, I don't really see a purpose for having restrictions on the height of hedge, hedges on the boundaries of properties. Uh, Corey Coolman pointed out, he feels this is a world that's more appropriate for homeowners association or need restrictions, and he really doesn't understand it either. Uh, Barry Van Huzen said that he would like to understand the history behind, behind this before he rushes to any judgment. I agree, and I'm sure Corey did as well, that, uh, it would be helpful to take a look at the history. I think it'd be helpful to know more about when the change was made to limit the height of living screens, or screens, and what problem the city was trying to solve. And Brody will look through their department's records and figure out whatever he can find on that subject. We then adjourned at seven twenty-one. Our next meeting is scheduled for March ten, um, which there may not be the date we need. Uh, Barry's out of town that day, so I'll get with Brody and figure out if we're going to go forward that night, um, or possibly reschedule. And with that, I'd like to introduce ordinance, um, nine dash two thousand and twenty-one, move the rules to be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second. Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Ordinance number nine, two thousand twenty-one, granting special approval use to Wood County plays for the construction of an inclusive playground at Rotary Community Park and declaring an emergency.
I would then move that ordinance nine dash two thousand twenty-one be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
I just have one thing I'd like to say. Um, I am glad that this is moving forward. And this is councilwoman Deborah Born.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, uh, Mayor, uh, this is Jonathan Smith. Just as a reminder on the budget, uh, note from the conversation we had at the, uh, public hearing on this, that, uh, the city has to upgrade the parking lot, and we do have that is set aside as funding for the two thousand twenty-one budget to hopefully move ahead and, and get that taken care of as well, so...
That was in addition to the, well, the proposed amended budget, which is still before council, uh, that came up with this council, and so administration being responsive to that, uh, need and request from councils put in a budget.
Yeah, I...
It's greatly appreciated.
Corey had made the same point of planning zoning, so I'm glad to hear it's going to get done. End of report.
Thank you.
We thought the vote...
We need a roll call, we need a vote on the last...
Oh, we didn't vote yours, oh, okay.
We had discussion, that's what threw us...
That's where, yeah.
Uh, roll call, please.
Okay, um, Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Now that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Uh, recreation committee?
Ah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a report, and, um, just a second here. Hang on, I'm reading this off the computer, so give me a couple of seconds. Um, okay, are you ready?
Yep.
Uh, Perrysburg City Council Recreation Committee meeting report for the regular meeting of February ninth, two thousand twenty. Present were Chairwoman Deborah Born, committee members Jonathan Smith and Jan Matroni, city administrator Bridget Cabot, and law director Catherine Sandretto. Chairwoman Born called the meeting to order at six thirty PM in council chambers. After the pledge of allegiance, citizen concerns were requested and none presented. Old business. No action on Riverside Park Cannon stands. B, the inclusive playground, Mr. Smith asked if the revised master plan will be returning to this committee for review. Ms. Cabot responded that since it passed the planning commission, it will go to the next council, to the council's planning and zoning committee. Chairwoman Born stated that she was glad to see the project moving forward. Mr. Smith agreed. No, no action on the splash pad. Ms. Matroni asked for which park is the multipurpose wall intended. Chairwoman Born responded that she had been told at the meeting last year by the wall's proposer, Damon Gores, uh, of Perrysburg Lacrosse, that the wall is transportable and can be moved from park to park as needed. Uh, E, Chairwoman Born reported that the idea of the West Side Handball Court was previously proposed by longtime Perrysburg citizen Al Reva. He has plans for this project, and as she receives them by the next, uh, recreation committee meeting, she will share them at that time. F, Chairwoman Born asked for comment on the unleashed dog park. Mr. Smith stated that he not thoroughly, he had not thoroughly reviewed the revised budget since he had just received it, but he remembered from a service committee meeting that a bucket truck was purchased for thirty thousand dollars less than the budget had expected, so the savings would be used for an unleashed dog park. Chairwoman Born stated that she recalled that the ORC nine five five dash, or dot one one requires that dogs on public property must be on a leash. She then asked for comment from the city administrator and law director on this topic. Ms. Cabot responded that she recalled that the section of the ORC to cover dog wardens and possibly cruelty to animals, but since she has not read it in ten years, she will go back and review it. Chairwoman Born commented that currently dogs must be taken, currently dogs may be taken into any of our parks if they are leashed. Ms. Matroni stated that she did not understand how these unleashed dog parks can be in compliance. Ms. Cabot and Ms. Sandretto agreed to look further into the matter. Ms. Sandretto asked, or, excuse me, Ms. Sandretto stated that it would be desirable to check with our insurance providers also. Chairwoman Born stated that she had read an incident, of an incident in New York City where people with big dogs allowed them to harm or kill other people's small dogs. She also stated the dog virus, parvovirus, which can be spread in such parks. This was a major problem in recent years. A positive outcome would be the opportunity for owners to socialize, but there are cons and legalities which need to be reviewed, and she repeated her request for the administrator and law director to do this. Mr. Smith stated that the intent would be to have separate areas for large and small dogs. Chairwoman Born responded that the problem in New York and Chicago was the fact that these rules have been poorly enforced, and many dog owners ignored them. Mr. Smith suggested putting up signs to define the two areas, and he added that he believes an unleashed dog park would be a benefit to the community. Chairwoman Born asked Mr. Smith where, where he proposed putting the park. Mr. Smith replied that he had previously proposed several locations, but at the end of the day, he felt that we need to work with the administration and follow their direction. Chairwoman Born stated that she had recalled that Bicentennial Park had been considered. She said that she had once lived in the neighborhood, and she recalled that the residents of the neighborhood were opposed to a lot of activity in the area. If we do decide to have this dog park, the best location would be Rotary Park or the park across the street. Mr. Smith claimed that he had lived in that neighborhood, um, since two thousand twenty-eleven, and if his neighbors complained, he's willing to take the hit. Ms. Matroni stated that she thinks Bicentennial Park is underutilized. Ms. Cabot mentioned a number of athletic groups who use it at one time or another throughout the year. Ms. Born read a list of thoughts and concerns from staff regarding a dog park on city-owned property, which she believes need to be answered if this project is to go further. There, these, these were obtained from Ms. Cabot, the list is attached to this report as a separate document. Mr. Smith asked Ms. Born to email to the committee the list so that she had read. Ms. Born agreed to do so. Under new business, Ms. Matroni stated that there was no item on the agenda requesting approval of committee minutes, by which she meant the report on the meeting written by city staff. She made a motion to approve the document, which was seconded by Mr. Smith. Therein ensued a lengthy discussion, which included the law director of the necessity and legality of the action. The law director claimed that because the rules of council designate a committee, committee chairs' report as the personal responsibility of the chairman, that these are not legitimate minutes because, because they cannot be amended at the committee level. She claimed that the ORC requires that the reports must be subject to amendment by other committee members if so desired, or they are not officially minutes. She also claimed that the policy of not accepting amendments to the committee chairs' reports was a personal decision on the part of Chairwoman Born and not a mandate for all council committees from section two-two oh point five of the city code. Chairwoman Born asked why her reports have not been placed on the city website. No answer was given. Discussion concluded, Chairwoman Born called to question, and the committee voted two to zero to approve the administration report as written per Robert's Rules of Order. The chair cannot vote unless there is a tie. Under the PrAC report, no report because PrAC has not met. Their first meeting of the year will be in April. Ms. Matroni said that she has heard that there is an opening on PrAC. Chair, Chairwoman Born said she had not heard this and thanked Ms. Matroni for her thought. Mr. Smith announced that he was planning to attend a Sunshine Law webinar the following morning. The law director stated that she believes that all council people need, need Sunshine Law training and encourage them to attend. Chairwoman Born reported that she had called the Ohio Attorney General's Office and learned that elected officials need to attend a training session only once during each term they are in office, and she had done so in two thousand nineteen. The meeting adjourned at seven oh two PM. The next regular meeting will be March ninth, two thousand twenty-one, at six thirty PM. Report submitted by Deborah L. Born, Chairwoman, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, real quick...
Hold on, there's just, there's no legislation, correct?
That is correct.
All right, uh, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, your honor. I just, uh, wanted to make a point of clarification. Although much of the report is accurate, there is, uh, one glaring misrepresentation of discussions mentioned that is not a reflection of what occurred. The report attempted to clarify and change in other committee members' comments in the report, along with change in the motion with, that the committee member made, the two oh vote was on the committee meeting minutes. Uh, the vote was not to approve the administration's report. That is all, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I would like to also add that, um...
Jan, you are who...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is Councilwoman Matroni. I'd also like to add that I too dispute her report as written because she paraphrased my statements in such a way that it altered or deformed the news.
All right, very good.
Okay, I would, I would like to state as chairwoman of the, of the committee that I have the, the meetings taped, and I do watch the meetings and what people have say, have to say, and, um, if anybody doesn't agree, well, that's, I'm sorry they don't, but that's, that's what happened at the meeting.
So a motion was completely changed? Got it, thanks.
All right.
Uh, I could not vote because of Robert's Rules of Order, as I recall, telling all of you.
Okay, that's, uh, we're not going to get into debate about the contents of the meeting that you...
I, I'm glad, because I think we have other, other issues that we on council need to be talking about, and this is very petty.
Oh, well, uh, that's fine, thank you very much. I just, everybody has had a voice, a chance to be heard, and, and voice their concerns and raise any, uh, changes they would like to, or believe are, be accurate. So moving forward, um, thank you, everyone. Personnel committee?
Uh, yeah, this is Councilwoman Coolman. Uh, we had our meeting tonight, and I'll try to, I'll try to give a brief report because we do have legislation in front of the council. Uh, we met today at five thirty PM in these chambers. We met today at 5:30 PM in these chambers. Minutes were approved. I should say, present were Mark Weber and Tim McCarthy, along with Kate Sandretto, Police Chief Pat, I can't think of his last name right now.
Pat Jones.
Pat Jones, thank you.
It's a complicated one.
The first item we discussed were what the legislation is about this evening. Basically, there are six ordinances that are housekeeping, that are now covered under our various collective bargaining agreements or handbook provisions, so those will be in front of council. There was also some other business discussed about potentially implementing some sort of surveys at the committee level to make sure we're, we're making decisions that our citizens, give us some insight on, on some of the important ones, or more important ones, I should say. Then we adjourned into executive sketch, executive session to discuss the police collective bargaining agreements. We then adjourned and came back and recommended that legislation be prepared for council to, and recommended to approve that collective bargaining agreement, or those collective bargaining agreements. And then the meeting was adjourned. So with that, I have several items of legislation tonight, so I would like to introduce ordinance 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by title and number only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call. Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 10, 2021, amending codified ordinance section 266.03-1 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code. Ordinance number 11, 2021, repealing codified ordinance section 266.03-2 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code, previously enacted by ordinance number 10591, passed on November 5th, 1991. Ordinance number 12, 2021, repealing codified ordinance section 266.03-3 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code, previously enacted by ordinance number 10591, and passed on November 5th, 1991. Ordinance number 13, 2021, amending codified ordinance section 266.03-4 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code. Ordinance number 14, 2021, amending codified ordinance section 266.03-6 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code. And ordinance number 15, 2021, amending codified ordinance section 266.09-1 of the City of Perrysburg Personnel Code, last amended by ordinance number 2, 2020, on February 14, 2020.
Discussion. You have to move to pass.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I move that ordinance 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 of 2021 be passed.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, move to passage.
We moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, sorry, I meant.
Okay, Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Thank you.
That concludes my report. I believe the next Personnel Committee will be March 23rd at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Public Utilities.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no report here this evening. Our next scheduled meeting is on February 24th, which is a Wednesday, at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Service.
I have no report. My next meeting is February 24th at 5:00 PM.
Any other business to come before this council?
Jonathan Smith will make a motion to adjourn.
Any objection? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Press 1 to disconnect, caller press 2. The conference is now finished. You will now be disconnected.